All right, so we're gonna call the maybe the whole meeting to order. I'm sorry, technical difficulties yet again. And this time it's all made. There we go. Okay. So we're gonna call this meeting to order. We have already done the pledge allegiance, but we do need to do another roll call.
Mrs. Aubrey?
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Jared?
Here.
Mrs. Leoni?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Ridenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Call President.
Okay, I saw two people come in since we started this, so I'm gonna do the procedures for public participation. Parred statements that are read to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the Board President prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone stating your name and address and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda as well as agenda items acted upon comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And we have a couple of announcements. We don't have any agenda edits, but there will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss negotiations, litigation, and personnel. And so moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam President. My report this evening is to address any misunderstanding for the Board, for the Board of School Directors, about the Wednesday, November 16th, 2020 Special Olympics, National Unified Champion School Banner unveiling celebration, which had taken place throughout district schools last month. This celebratory event was one that planned, was planned by our high school, our high school Blazer Unified Ambassador students for all of our district students in celebrating our Blazer Learning Community's inclusive culture in support of our district vision of learning together and advocating for all as we continue to engage our district mission of taking pride in growing diverse learners in a safe environment daily. As intimated during the Monday, November 19th voting meeting, public comment period, last month's event was not the parading of our learning disabled students, rather a celebration of the recognition provided by a Special Olympics National Recognition Program certified body made up of nine members nationally. In meeting 10 standards of excellence and choosing to include a feat only accomplished this year by just one Berks County school, which was our high school, three other schools in the Commonwealth, and just 110 schools across the nation, which means out of, to put it in perspective, out of 98,755 public schools across the country, only 0.001% of the schools received recognition this year. I can think of many times throughout my education and my education career where I felt proud to be a part of something very special in the communities in which I had the distinct pleasure of serving and/or being a part of. However, there are four that immediately come to mind, and one being that Wednesday in November as the superintendent of this great school system. A second in 2016 as a high school principal where the student body voted for the non-traditional homecoming queen or king, showing day two chose to include. A third that I can reference was as a high school health and physical education teacher between the years of 1999 and 2005, where I was trusted by parents to continue to have their son, who was part of the autism, on the autism spectrum in my class for six years straight. And one of those years for two classes because those parents felt confident that their son's peers would be sure to include their child in all class activities in a safe and welcoming environment, knowing that was a culture that had always been created in all of my courses. And the fourth being a 1979 and 1980 school year, yes, I'm dating myself a little bit, as a grade seven student where I first, I saw firsthand how my late brother's peers, my late brother's peers included him as he navigated the growth opportunities, the disease of cancer that threw at him each and every day, culminating in remembering him through a memory page in the class of 1983 yearbook, three years after his passing. Yes, that too was in this great school system over 40 years ago. None of these shared experiences paraded students that had permanent or temporary disabilities, rather celebrated the inclusive nature of their respective schools and communities, two of them particular to the Blazer Learning Community, where I am proud to share have had the good fortune of having ties to as a student, a former resident, and employee over a 50-year span. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
And does anybody on the Board have any comment? Moving on to Student Board Representative Report. Finesse O'Leary? Is it blue? Is it blue? Yep. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to finance. They just got three, three items there. Any Board concerns or comments on that? Can I ask, our sub, that sub-grant agreement, is that, is that for specific project? Or is it for the BCIU? Is that for a specific project? Or is that, that just our annual contribution to BCIU? Okay. Any Board comments on any of those? Public comment on finance? Moving on to programs, this course selection guide that for the high schools, we, I had completely forgotten last week, but we went over it two months ago. Forgot about it. Any comments, questions, concerns on the high school course selection guide? Any public comment? Under personnel? Retirements, leaves, appointments? Any comments, questions, concerns on those from the Board? Any public comment? Presentations by Board members? Mr. Scott, Secretary Correspondence?
I am now here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday. I won't see you again.
You too.
Take care. BCIU Board Report, Mr. Jared?
There were only besides usual administrators, items that were voted on and discussed. Two things, things to talk about, which is that you all had this plan, all their action items for different circumstances that may occur in the future. And the legislation lobbying just discussing with the reelected representatives for the state.
Did they discuss the re, the redistricting at all?
No, it's.
Oh, I was just curious. It's fine.
Legislatively, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Now they didn't really get into it. Just there were new folks that were after me and I.
I see.
And our next meeting.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. Jared from the Board? And moving on to BCTC, Ms. Thompson?
We didn't meet last month. Our next one is next Thursday, it's three or three organizations.
Okay. Not a lot there, but is there any questions for Ms. Thompson on BCTC? As brief as it was. Mr. Strobel, I don't know if there was a legislative report from November 8th, or did we go?
I did attend. I'm driving, so I won't be able to read it to you.
That's okay.
But in that real cap, I capsulized, you know, about charter school reform funding and it was in-depth description of all the different bills that are being worked on and supported through legislative movement and lobbying support. It was pretty in-depth. I won't be able to read it to you.
No, that's okay. So if there's.
It was a good meeting.
Okay. If there's anything that you remember when you look at your notes, just give me a heads up. If you want me to give you a couple of minutes to talk about it at the voting meeting, that's cool too. Okay?
Sure. I'm driving, so I won't be able.
No, I get it.
I've got two hours.
So are there any other reports? Any other reports as the, the task? Okay. So we'll hear about that next month. Any public comment on the presentations by Board members? Okay, we've heard none. Got headcount statistics. Things seem to have kind of, the changes, at least COVID-related, seem to have leveled off. Any comments or questions from the Board for the administration on headcount? Public comment? Curriculum and instruction, Ms. Aubrey?
On the Monday, November 21st, we had a presentation by our Career Innovation Coordinator. It was a lengthy presentation talking about internships and how kids could go to shadow at certain jobs. We looked at, I think, up to five different calendar choices. We decided that we were gonna hold off on voting on one. They were really off each one by one day. It wasn't a huge deal. And we talked about TSA and the status of such. And I think we are waiting for another update. Is that correct? To make sure the program is still happening.
Right. Any questions for Ms. Aubrey from the Board? Any public comment?
I have.
Oh, okay.
I have, with regard to the calendar, we're gonna need to look to get Board action at the voting meeting this month on the 19th. I think our last, we did, we presented the four different scenarios, and I think from my understanding, there was two that were in particular that the committee was interested in, which was the 5:31 end date and the 6:05 end date, which would have been that Friday and that subsequent Wednesday.
And it was discussed that the association had preferred the first, is that correct?
Correct, the 5:31 end date. The difference in the start dates would be, with the 5:31 end date would be the 23rd of August starting, and with a 6:05 end date would be the 28th of August start date for students, which is a Monday.
Okay, that's all. Any questions for Ms. Aubrey on that? Any public comment? Okay, extracurricular?
Yes, we have a meeting this evening. We have ladies and girls, boys and girls basketball and their first games. We have 40 kids try out for boys basketball, which is great turnout. We have a top hat wrestling match, and we placed 10 out of 36 teams. And we also had a wrestler who was first at that event. We also had awards at all of our band cavalcade events. And our band has increased in size over the last two years, which is good news. And at our last event, Ms. Oswald won the best band director, which is also exciting news. We also talked about the softball fence, which we're gonna have to look into because it's temporary fence. It's not looking, it's setting over or anything, et cetera. So we're gonna have to look at that, look at something more permanent over in the softball field at the high school.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Ms. Bell on extracurricular from the Board? Any public comment? And moving on to facilities and transportation, and I just wanna check, Mr. Strobel, I have notes for both this and for technology. If you're okay with me, just, you can just jump in if I forget anything. Is that okay?
Yep, please do.
All right. So Mr. Strobel's the Chair of both those committees. So we just had a meeting before, before these, the committee I hold tonight for facilities and transportation, and we had a big laundry list of stuff to talk about. We got a fire alarm update in the high school annex. We voted and approved Phase One of our fire alarm electrical system repairs and some replacements. Phase One has happened. We, we had SSI, who was our fire alarm maintenance company. They're, they're coming in to give us some estimates on the following phases. It's a, for anybody who wasn't here when we first discussed this, the wiring for the, for the, for some of the fire alarm system within the annex is original to the building. So it's from the 60s. So getting that replaced. And so the backflow preventer is leaking in the high school, and that prevents backflow into the building from the, from the gray water that is leaving the system and then, you know, the even dirtier than gray water that's leaving, that's leaving the school. And we have had, we've had Berkshire Mechanical and Halter together trying to figure out a plan of action to fix it. They have, we have, Berkshire Mechanical's given us a, an estimate of $8,600 to not only repair it, but also to move the preventer valve, the backflow preventer valve, because right now it's directly above the, in the ceiling, so that when it leaks, it leaks into the room. And so it's going to be moved to the wall. So, so that's part of what adds a little bit of cost, but that will be a good, good fix. That was voted by the committee to move that out of committee to approve at the next Board meeting, to, to be up for approval the next Board meeting. We had Tavish Ricker come to, who is a, who is an Eagle Scout candidate. He has an idea for a project where he would like to build at least three to four picnic tables for the stadium. He's actually interested in building as many as he can do by, by the deadline for his project that he can get funding for. I have copies of his presentation here for anybody on the Board who wants a copy. He, if he does, if he does this, he's gonna have, he would, he just needed the go-ahead from us to, to start fundraising, knowing that we could, we could, we could do this. We, I, the only thing I, we asked for is for him to keep us apprised of the project and that Mr. Spores and Mr. Withers in facilities had final say on where they went, how many there were, stuff like that. So we'll, we'll hear more about that going forward. Okay, I'm gonna skip over that for a minute. So we had lights, lights installed, 65 lights installed in the middle school auditorium. We have 90 lights that still need to be installed in the high school auditorium to fix ones that weren't working. That's gonna, that work's gonna start the 21st. We, we scheduled, we, we approved money to pay for a roofing project last, last month, and that will be at the middle school, and that will be, is scheduled for 12/12, weather permitting. It should be done in one day. We replaced, we are in the process of replacing the water fountain, the water fountain filters for every building. And we found out that in the future we will be installing those units where you can fill up your water bottle in all the buildings, not just in the middle school and the high school. So those will be also coming to the PC and the, and the IC. But the filters have to happen now. So the middle school gym currently has 120 broken seats. And for, for anybody who's following along at home, we had close to 120 broken seats last year. And last year, when we ordered seats, we ordered more than we needed because we knew it would take a long time to come in. And now the ones we've purchased are all gone as well. So we've, we've given, given Dr. Cooper and Mr. Withers some direction to, before we order more seats to maybe look at, most of the, most of the damage is happening because of the, most of the damage is happening because of high-velocity balls hitting, hitting the, hitting the bleachers when they are closed. And so we're looking at possibly putting rubber stopper in front of them when they're closed up. We did also ask them to get a price for a different type of full, full bleachers. You know, I better be sitting down when I hear how much that one's gonna cost. But we just wanted to know what that cost would be. We're not saying that that's what we're gonna do.
Was it 50 or 120?
120 this year. Yeah, they, they replaced, they replaced 100, oh, they replaced 120 seats last year, and they have 50 more. Yeah, that, you're, you're right. There are only 50 seats currently broken. They replaced seats twice last year, and the total was 120. I apologize. I said that wrong. And then the last thing that we talked about was the estimated completion of installing cameras on the buses. We still have, what was it, 20-something buses?
25.
We still have 25 buses that need cameras. The estimated date of completion on that is 12/29. And then we'll have, we'll have cameras on all the buses. Okay, that was a lot. But there was only one thing that came out of committee to hopefully be voted upon with their approval was the, was the maintenance repair bill for the backflow preventer at the high school. Any questions on all that? Any, any comments from the public? Okay, moving on to finance. Oh, good, that's me too. We didn't have a meeting in November. We didn't have a meeting in November. There will be a meeting the 19th of this month. Any comments from the Board on that? Any comments from the public? Policy review?
We, tonight's session, we had a meeting earlier today at 5:30. We only had a chance to go through one policy. We did the first reading and almost slashed out, tweaking Policy 707. I think we still have a lot more work to do on that, which refers to the use of facilities here at the school. The remaining policies have been tabled to our next meeting, which is gonna take place on January 9th, 2023.
Okay, any, any comments on policy from the Board? Public comment? Okay. Technology Committee, also chaired by Mr. Strobel, but I was there. And so we spoke about equipment replacements. Did the printer discussion happen in that meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
And it was approved.
It did.
Okay. So we took, we spoke about equipment replacements. Mr. Matts is taking a look. He's always trying to find a way to figure out if we should be buying or leasing. You know, things have changed along the last five years. You know, a lot of teachers maybe don't need a standing computer in their room. They, maybe they don't need ethernet connections for 50 or 30, 30 computers because kids are using the wifi, because we improve the wifi in the classrooms, things like that. So he's gonna come back with his report on where we are with what his plans are for us to approve for next year in January, I believe. Website community engagement platform, you're gonna have to remind me what we talked about.
That was, the Board voted and approved the Aptige.
Right. So we voted, this is something we voted on at the last meeting to make a change for our website host from Blackboard.
To Aptige.
To Aptige. And he gave a presentation to the whole Board as well. And the other thing we voted, we voted on was the printer contract. And we did vote on that last, last, last month. And I forget, it, same company.
Same company.
Just get the name.
Stratics.
Stratics, so we're still with them. And that is it unless Mr. Strobel remembers anything different.
Nope, everything's good. The only thing I would add is that, you know, there's been significant effort to try and get everything leased so that.
Right.
The new technology, as we know, technology's rolling over every 30 days. So every 40 years, you know, we can update our technology and keep our budget more leveled off instead of having highs and lows. And that effort has really panned out well for us.
Right. Any questions from the Board on technology? Our next meeting will be canceled in December. So then our next meeting after that will be January 23rd. That'll be after our reorg of the committee assignments. Any, any comments from the Board? Public comment? Old business? Peril of the minutes? Any public comment? No, any Board comment on that? Public comment? Nothing under new business? And now it's time for a presentation by the public on issues.
I wanted to take the opportunity to apologize. I'm not sure if I was able to capture what I wanted to capture last evening. And I think what I said might have been poorly. I asked my husband, I was so upset that I couldn't possibly offend you, Dr. Cooper. Jesus asks us to be humble, and I want to formally apologize in person and not via email. As I mentioned last evening, I absolutely love the Special Olympics. What impressed me the most is when one particular teacher got up and spoke. He spoke of how to be inclusive and students attributed to their ill feelings and how he's not inclusive of one student who identifies as the opposite gender. Because of diversity equity inclusion program, when you mentioned. When you mention terms such as inclusive, diversity, equity, of which the school has effectively adopted Marxist ideology. The district has now worked the meaning of these terms linking to oppression. Some students thought of gender ideology, sexuality stance, rather than what the actual celebration was really about. It hurts me that students who took the disabled children and grouped them with an unaffiliated community. I still stand on that disabled children are no different from any other student. Publicly showcasing disabilities can make a student uncomfortable, especially in the middle school when emotions and hormones are all on key. Exposing the student body to activities such as volunteering for actual Special Olympics would help contribute to removing the labels around disability and perhaps encourage the normalcy of human平等性. For instance, a school musical that has brought some middle school students who have never, ever been together otherwise and is building long-lasting relationships, like I've mentioned in the past. Music unites the body. My daughter auditioned, and she ran into the main role. And there's kids of all different kinds of walks of life in the actual musical. And the types of relationships that I already see now forming, they're gonna take that until adulthood. I took it to adulthood. Music really does unite the body, and I can't stress it enough how we really need to encourage that. Building, like music programs, middle school, high school, I would even encourage you in the intermediate center, the skits, something. And it would really help the community.
Gretchen Apple, close to her. I do have a question that reading Olympics was a lot up. Have you guys looked at the books that are on that list? Are you there? I think there's a book called George on there that should not be on that list at all. So maybe next year, you guys could go through and cross off the books that are kind of appropriate for our kids to read.
Well, we didn't develop the list.
No, I know.
We didn't develop the list, and Mrs. Sanders and I talked about it, and wrote the list with her view. And she spent, it was discussed amongst all the librarians, and she, there was a discussion about it before it was going to be.
So is George on the list for our kids to read?
I don't believe she was gonna send it out with that on it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just throw this out there? Because I knew, I, there was a comment here at the last meeting. I don't think we have any responsibility for it. When they do the book fair, and they bring the books, there's some question about some of the books that they chose to bring in that some of the parents were upset about. Is that something, do we have any, any say on that, or are they just trying to, is it just, I'm just, I'm just asking?
That's, that's. I don't, I don't know if you realize that separate. Like, are you, are you talking about?
No, I'm not talking about this.
Okay.
I'm just talking about like a book fair, like before the holidays. I mean, some of the parents are here, but it was just, it was just a question that some of the, some of the books that were, you know, available for the kids, maybe would have been questionable. I'm not, I'm not going to politics or anything like that. It was just, I just didn't know if we, does our school approve with the kids? You're here, so I don't know if it was Jimmy that told me this, or somebody told me this. But it was just like, it was a book fair, right?
It was.
Right, it was a book fair.
Valerie.
Which is a question.
Right, Valerie went to a book fair.
Right.
Another school.
Another school.
This is our school.
Questionable material at that book fair.
Oh, I thought it was her.
No, no, it's out.
No, I thought it was here.
She wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be at our book fair.
No, 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 no.
No, they didn't happen to us.
It was.
No, I'm gonna try to assert property.
No, no, clarify, please.
You can come up.
No, 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 it was, I took my kids to a separate book fair.
Right.
Because I, I'm not sure, I have a material that Scholastic is gonna be rolling out that I want my kid necessarily to read. And the book fair was, the Scholastic book fair was at the end of the district. The other school was more of an independent book, so that I was able to.
Okay, so it was, it didn't happen here yet?
Well, it has. I, I have pictures. I can send it to the board of what was displayed. I gave examples. I believe I put that in the email, but it was a district book fair.
Okay.
That questionable.
So I guess the question is, do we, do we look at that?
Questionable books did end up at our book fair.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I can send you pictures of what was.
I'm just trying to be open here. I'm just wondering.
I do wonder, do we have any?
Do we have?
Do the, do this, do the librarians have any say in what's offered at the Scholastic?
I don't have a question.
I, I don't know if that's him. I would assume, I shouldn't assume, but it's our professional staff at the individual buildings being a librarian, so.
Should have heard this, right?
Okay, okay.
I mean, I could verify and put that in my report to get.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah. So does the library for each school that?
That's, that's what he's gonna find out.
I'd have to check.
Maybe there's a way for certain things not to be included, because we have a question of certain topics or things.
These are books that were actually on, I mean, I guess you have books wherever, then you have books that are actually on display, like right there, like window shop, right in front of the face, moving.
Yeah, so my, my understanding is, you know, there's the, there's the, you know, the leaflet that goes home to kids on that terrible paper that like the ink all gets on your hands. And so we wouldn't have any say about what's on there, but, but, you know, we'll, we'll ask Dr. Cooper to verify if, if the librarians and/or principals have been to power. That it's fair, which is a fair question.
I just, I was asking.
It's a fair, it's a fair question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? All right. And so. All right, let's kind of anecdote this.
This Saturday is Christmas in Birdsboro, and we have, our scouts are participating. We have varsity boys' jazz band and chorus will be performing, and so come check out me, Bert Hart, 40.
Have you gotten enough people for the activity?
Oh, my.
Yeah.
No, we can use help with the live activity.
Maybe Mr. Spores could give us the names of some.
We need some wise men.
Some, some.
Do you think Mr. Spores is gonna do it?
No, no, I want him to give us the names of some of the advisors to some of the clubs that we might be able to con into doing it.
Now, Mr. Spores didn't.
Okay, great. All right. Yeah, I'll be there. I'll be there directing traffic for the 5K. And so. Do, and, oh, and there the, the community center has a big cut there.
And the libraries.
And the library's doing breakfast with salmon in the morning. And there's a wine and cheese event at the community center as well at the end of the day.
And beer.
Is that what you?
And beer. No, the checking out is at the door. It's, it's, it's a, it's a good, it's a really good community event.
It's a little bit.
Yeah, and I.
Lots to do for all ages.
Yes. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. See you in two weeks.